Thank you very much. This is the rescheduled meeting from July 22nd when we were unable to get our live streaming going. It's the same agenda for that night and we just have a very few announcements to let you know, the folks at home. On our projects, so we want to let you know that we're making good progress on the Rec Park projects. They're coming along. We hope to have the parks substantially complete by the middle of August, the restrooms, and we will update you as that progresses. Also, the Stony Brook Culver, they are working on that again. And so we hope to, over the next several weeks, have that project completed. When we have more detailed information, we will send out word through our notification system. And again, we'd like to remind folks that if you'd like to find out more about what's going on in your community and be notified about these issues and meetings and anything else that you find to be important, you can select the topics that you're interested in. Go to redhook.org and sign up for notify me at the top. The weather, has everybody tired? I know I'm one of those. Cooling centers. So the Red Hook Community Center has agreed to be a cooling center in our community, 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. And so that's starting tomorrow. And if you need a place to get out of the heat, that's a place that you might consider. That's over on Fisk Street, on the east side of the village, right near 199. In addition, if you received a notification today from my office, you know that there is a program, the heat program, that also provides some information and some support for air conditioners. If you qualify, you can receive air conditioners and install it, up to $800 if you meet certain income thresholds. And if you'd like to find out more about that, you can go on our website or contact the Dutchess County Office of the Aging. It's one of the five sites that takes applications for that. So those are the announcements that I have. Does anybody else have any announcements they would like to make? Okay, hearing none. We're going to start off the meeting with the supervisor's report as we do. And for the folks at home, I apologize. Here's the agenda for tonight's meeting. If you want to take a look at the topics, it's a very short agenda that we have. We do have our board reports and committee reports as well.
Okay. The agenda's not showing, just so you know.
Thank you.
Now it's showing.
Good.
You got the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so a resolution regarding a policy statement with our Sustainable Community Program. I've heard that we started a while back. Minor changes, but important changes, no less, that we have to make on our dogs law and dog park laws. And then we've had a request just to make a name to, a name change to a private road. It's an individually owned property. And then just board reports and department reports and committee reports as well. Okay, so I'll, I'll start off with the monthly statement of the supervisor. This is for the period June 1st through June 30th. And each month, we report on the finances at any given moment. And so we started the month with an opening balance of $8,52,110. We had receipts of $1,176,871, dispersment of $1,913,865 for an ending balance of $7,315. So that was a decline of approximately $700,000 for that month. We also have some very minor adjustments that our bookkeeper, Anne Conway, has given to us. And in addition to that, you have your monthly variance report that you receive. And you see adjustments related to the Rec Park interest. And here's our variance report. Are there any questions about the financial materials in the supervisor's report? Board members have? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report.
So move.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Christine, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Jacob and Bill, thank you very much. Okay, at this time. Sue, may we have the clerk's report for that month as well?
Sure. June 1st through June 30th, total local shares remitted to supervisor as revenue, $963. Amount admitted to New York Ag and Markets for their spade and neuter program, $37. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. For a total state and local revenue of $1,045 pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law. I hereby certify that the foregoing is a false, and a true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above.
Thank you very much, Sue.
Well, the bookkeeper also handed me five abstracts. So I'll go through those as quickly as I can.
Thank you, Sue.
January of 2020, total abstract was $295,280.29. February, total abstract, $979,791.93. Total abstract for March, $161,073.19. Total abstract for April, $50,590.33. Total abstracts for May, $256,762.93. Total abstract for June, $523,982.71. So for January through June, we paid vouchers, 25918 through 26530. And I certify that for the month of January through June.
Thank you very much, Sue. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, a public comment. You all received, we had a, an email letter from Renee O'Neil regarding records, speed studies. And we'll be addressing that in the correspondence folder with the letters that we received, both from Dutchess County and from New York State Department of Transportation. And that's all I have for a public comment. The first item of the agenda is a discussion of the resolution for the policy statement on the Audubon International Sustainable Community Program. And Christine, did you want to say something?
I have to recuse myself from this discussion, so I'm gonna exit the meeting. And then, Robert, perhaps you can text me when I should get back in.
Okay, very good. Or can do it in the chat feature, actually. Very good. About approximately a year ago or so, we were made aware of an opportunity to have a grant funded, fully paid for, participation in Audubon International Sustainable Communities Program. You have the materials, some of which were provided back then. The, the program helps communities take steps to ensure that they are health and vibrant places in which to live, work, and play, both today and tomorrow. The vision is founded in three pillars of sustainability, excuse me. A healthy local environment, quality of life for citizens, and economic vitality. And they have, you know, different entities that can participate. There's a public sector track. It's designed to position a local government, municipal, town, city, county, or regional, as a demonstrated leader on sustainability while simultaneously working with the community's businesses, schools, residents, and stakeholders to foster a citizen-driven process of planning, decision-making, and action resulting in concrete positive results. I think that would be the important part of this program. So we tasked Laurie Huestead, who chairs our CAC, and the CAC to figure out a group that could conduct, you know, the task here starts with having a sustainability coordinator, forming a steering committee, engaging stakeholders, evaluating your baseline, where are you now, forming partnerships, identify funding opportunities, enhance existing efforts underway, and plan strategically. And then, you know, on the other end, establish measures of success. Once you implement, take action, get results, earn recognition, and market your success. And so I think they sort of completed stage one, which is to form the steering committee. And that's mostly the Red Hook Together Group. And that group has been meeting now for several years. Representatives from around the community, the villages, the libraries, the schools, and Chamber, and then many other entities make up Red Hook Together. And appoint a sustainability coordinator, do the baseline survey, and more for, for stage one. And so one of the tasks is to adopt a sustainable community development policy. And this was worked on by not only Laurie, but Sarah and Boden, and also Nick Sienzo and several others. And so we have here resolution number, I apologize, Sue, I don't know what number that is.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thank you very much. Dated 7/27/2020. It's a resolution authorizing adoption of the Sustainable Community Development Policy. And I'll just read you a little bit about it. It says that the town has entered and committed to the work of the Sustainable Communities Program, an international science-based third-party certification program that guides communities through a customized journey to become healthy and vibrant places in which to live, work, and play. Whereas the town adopted Resolution Number 52 on May 14th, 2019, expressing this commitment and authorizing the Climate Smart Task Force to pursue certification on behalf of the town. Whereas Laurie Huestead of the task force and as the sustainability coordinator have worked on this project in partnership with the local grassroots organization, Red Hook Together. And the work has led to the town of Red Hook receiving Audubon International's Green Community Award, signifying the successful completion of stage one of the Sustainable Communities Program. And whereas the town has shown its commitment with ongoing efforts of the many committees, and we do, we have the Conservation Advisory Council, the Community Preservation Fund Board, the Greenway and Trails Committee, the Tree Preservation Commission, the Energy Committee, and the Agriculture and Open Space Committee, many of which are involved in the efforts that are highlighted as far as Audubon International. And the adoption of principles of sustainable resource management can provide a framework that will assist town employees and elected officials in moving in a more sustainable direction. Whereas the willingness of the town to move in that direction, of becoming a certified sustainable community and promoting the values of sustainability with inclusion and equity as its central value can serve as a model for others and encourage equitable economic development in our town and region. And it talks about the partnership of Red Hook Together, Historic Red Hook, Red Hook Public Library, the Tivoli Free Library, the Red Hook Community Center, Red Hook Central School District, Bard College, and other local groups, that the town recognized these sustainable practices contribute to strengthen relationships that build well-being, including social and economic flourishing, and increase equity for all community members. And the last, now therefore, is endorsing this resolution. And I'm sorry, it took a long time to read that. I thought folks would want to hear it. So is there a motion to pass Resolution Number 33?
So move.
Thank you, Bill O'Neil. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob Testa. All in favor? Christine Kane?
Recused.
Right. Bill Hamel?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Can you have a quick question?
Yes.
The grants that were provided to pay for that Audubon, who provided those grants, Audubon?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
We had to compete against other communities to get it, so we scrambled. So. All right, item number two is discussion on proposed changes to Chapter 63 and 64 of our code. That's dogs and dog parks. And I thought maybe if you wouldn't mind, and I will take away the screen share. I see I still have the screen share on. My apologies. Christine Shaw and Bill Hamel, could you just briefly describe what the changes are proposed to?
Bring Christine back?
Yeah, we, yeah, we should bring Christine back.
I'll, I'll bring Christine back. If you would be kind enough to.
Sure.
Describe.
Let me just quickly go over this. The primary purpose of this is to do some housekeeping on our dog law, laws involving our, our dog control matters. Number one, we had made some changes in the intermunicipal agreement between the two towns managing the dog park and the procedures for managing the dog park. And one of the things that we did away with was the concept of the dog tag, not licenses, but there was an entry tag that was originally conceived of and incorporated in this local law. So there are a number of changes that are made in this revision that remove all of those references and all of the related matters to that dog entry tag concept. So that is a large part of these restrictions. One of the other provisions of this amendment is to add in, in addition to the basic impoundment fees, which are an administrative fee. Currently, they are $25 for the first impoundment, for $15 for each additional 24 hours, and then additional veterinary medical costs. The, the new provisions do two things. They remove the actual dollar amounts for the administrative fees and moves those to a resolution to be adopted from time to time. The local law says that the impoundment fees will be adopted in a fee schedule established by resolution of the town board, much like you establish, for example, building permits and that sort of thing, that way, usually annually. And then in addition, in addition to that, we've said that an owner redeeming their dog shall pay all reasonable expenses incurred as a result of said impoundment. Expenses include, but are limited to, shelter, food, and veterinary costs necessary to fight its seizure and are holding the dog in accordance with this chapter and Article 7 of the Ag and Markets Law. The town board currently has a shelter agreement with SPCA, and that's, that would form the basis for those costs at this point in time. And I don't know if Bill has anything that you'd like to add.
The only thing I'll say is, we ran these changes by the Dutchess County SPCA, and they had no objections.
Okay. Well, shall we? I mean, if we're comfortable, I know these are minor changes, but if we're comfortable setting a public hearing, maybe for our second meeting in August, the 26th? Anybody not okay with that? Okay. Seven forty-five, perhaps? This would be Resolution Number 34. It's establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook Local Law, a proposed of 2020 regarding dog parks. This would be our first local law of the year. And I think we've mentioned what the proposed changes are, Chapter 63 and 64. So I would move Resolution 34 for August 26th at 7:45 p.m. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Bill Hamel?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Jacob? Christine? Bill O'Neil? Bill O'Neil's on mute, maybe? Bill O'Neil, you there?
O'Neil is not in the picture.
He's muted.
He's muted. Bill, unmute yourself. There you go.
Aye.
Okay, very good. The resolution passes. Thank you very much. Another very quick ministerial item of business is a resolution to approve a private road name change, Martin's Lane to Eden Knoll, a property over on River Road, was purchased by an individual. And she would like the name of the private roadway to be changed. And this would be Resolution Number 35. You have correspondence to this effect dated 7/27/2020, approving the revised private drive name from Martin's Lane to Eden Knoll. And this is in reference to Tax Parcel 6172-0000819. And we have this request coming through Dutchess County and also from a representative, or rather, the owner of the property through their representative. And so I move Resolution Number 35. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Jacob?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Bill O'Neil?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Resolution passes. Okay, so we're moving on to board reports. Bill, do you have your documents up, Bill O'Neil?
No, I don't. I don't have access to my computer.
Oh, you don't?
Well, I'm just on the phone.
Okay, fine. Well, maybe we can reassign. Christine Kane?
Yes.
Do you have your documents up?
No, I know when I can, in a minute.
Okay. I was going to impose upon you to, to read the ZBA minutes.
Okay, I just gotta get to them.
Or just summarize for us, there's a, a bunch of them here. There's one from June 10th, one from June 23rd, one from July 8th. If not, I could summarize.
I'm almost there.
Okay. Do you want to have your?
So, June, the June 10th meeting. Let's see, they had a public hearing for an amended appeal for an area variance, just to construct a 480 square foot addition. I'm looking for the address of where this was gonna be, in the RD3 zone. It would change the coverage in the RD3 zone. It was on 155 Country Club Drive in the RD3 zoning district. And so as a result, they had quite a few questions, and I believe also some input from neighbors. So they had, let's say they did not make a decision, it looks like. So they closed the public hearing on that and declared it a type-two action or secret, it looks like.
Okay.
And then I gotta scroll through the materials that came with that meeting. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, then they had a special meeting on June 23rd. And there was, it looks like it was for the same area variance request. And it looks like they granted that request on a unanimous vote. Okay. And I think that's it. Two meetings on what it looks like I have here.
There's also July 8th one. Do you have that one, or I could summarize?
I don't see it here.
Okay. Maybe it didn't make it to the digital. ZBA monthly report, July 2020, the board met on July 8th with all members present to review an application. The application is for two area variances. It's in College Park for a 500 square foot addition on the subject parcel, which would result in 14 and a half percent of building coverage to be located six feet from the side yard lot. And it's in, it is relevant to the town of Red Hook zoning law, Section 143-12. That's our scheduled area and bulk regs. It limits the maximum building coverage to 10% and requires a minimum 20, 20 yard, 20 foot, rather, side yard block line setback for the principal building. And the applicant talks about an addition of a bedroom and a bathroom. And this was just a discussion, and the board is scheduling a public hearing for a special meeting on August 4th, and has arranged to meet the applicant at the subject property. That's what we have for boards. I don't have a planning board report. But perhaps at the next meeting, we'll get one. Okay, we can move right into department reports. We have Teresa with us, so why don't we ask Teresa to go first? And Teresa, we're also going to merge one of your topics. If you don't mind, once you've concluded, share the stuff that's in the correspondence folder as well as it relates to speed limits and since you'll be talking about Rockefeller Lane in the school zone as well. So. Let's see if we've got that. We are in speaker view now. And are you all able to see Teresa on your, on your screen, Teresa? Can you hear? You're not.
I think we will when she starts talking.
She starts talking, right.
Teresa, if you start talking, you should come up in the screen.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Yep, there you are.
Okay, so this is the Highway Department Board Report for July 22nd, which is last week, but for tonight's meeting. The first thing I have is the school zone signage for Rockefeller Lane. At our last meeting, Councilman Bill Hamel asked if the speed limit signs and the school zone signs could be relocated on Rockefeller Lane to reduce confusion. I asked Cornell Local Roads for guidance, and they proposed a change in the order of the signs. The 45 mile per hour sign on Rockefeller could be placed after the school, traveling east, and the school zone ahead would be. would be upgraded to the new school sign with a placard saying ahead and a twenty-five mile per hour warning sign on the assembly. The same school sign assembly would replace the old sign on the east side of the road. And I've attached diagrams showing the proposed sign assembly and location. And you'll notice that the new school zone signs just have a symbol of two people walking with books instead of saying school. I'm also providing a worksheet for the purchase of the signs. The cost for the school sign assembly is three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-six cents before shipping. In addition to the school zone signs, we have had a request for a slow comma pedestrian sign assembly on Station Hill Road. The residents have put their own sign in the right of way and it's not an approved traffic control device. We would like to replace it with the appropriate sign, which would cost a hundred and forty-four dollars and eight cents. So the total amount needed for the signs with shipping is five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. We currently have seventy-seven dollars of unappropriated funds in the traffic control budget line. So if the town board decided they wanted to go ahead with these signs, they would also have to provide the funding. The second item I have is a maintenance contract for highway garage equipment. Since the last meeting, Robert has signed the agreement, so it's pretty much telling you that the highway garage has several pieces of mechanical equipment that need service throughout the year. And we chose a contract that has two inspections. So if there are any issues, we'll be able to catch them early. And if we need any emergency service, the American Heating and Cooling Company of Poughkeepsie would be the people to come out and fix that. So the Aspen Wall Road construction project, the tentative start date is now the actual start date, which was Friday, July 25th. The road surface was milled out in the development areas, which was the first phase. And hopefully, weather permitting and contractor schedule by the end of this week, there'll be a two-inch overlay of type-six asphalt. The construction is expected to take about two weeks, again, weather and contract schedule permitting. And in the month of July, the town of Red Hook has replaced culvert pipes and catch basins on Cornell Avenue and has replaced culvert pipe on Aspen Wall Road and Fraley Lane. And that's all I have for this month. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Teresa.
I just want to thank you, Teresa, for looking into that.
Not a problem.
I thank you, Teresa. I think it's a really good recommendation to reorder the signs and the way you have them placed. I didn't know if you wanted me, would you like me to put that up on the screen so folks can see?
That's up to you.
Okay. But essentially, they'll, they'll see the, the speed limit will be further away from the school. And there'll be that sign that you referred to advising them of a school zone. And I think that that would be helpful, of course, as we continue to talk about speeding. The experts tell us that, you know, signage isn't, isn't necessarily everything. In fact, the people who don't drive safely often completely ignore the signage and drive at speeds that they desire to. But obviously, this is a much smarter sequencing and we really appreciate your, your doing that. And in fact, it was consistent with the stuff that DOT sent along. And so I thought maybe if I could just talk for a few minutes on speed limits, just follow up on that. It's highway related. And you have your, in your packets, you have the correspondence that we received from Duchess County, or at least you did in the last batch, talking about the need to provide a study funded by the town for both applications. That would be the school zone application and College Park reductions. And so you heard me say at a previous meeting that I was under the impression that they had rescinded that requirement. We all heard that last year, many of our municipalities, and we became very upset. And so we expressed our frustration. And I was under the impression that that had been rescinded. So I reached out to some others, my colleagues, talking about, you know, writing to the governor and to reaching out to our state representatives to see if we can gain a local home rule authority to determine the speed limits on the local roads. And there's a federal classification, Teresa has that list, that determines which are the local roads and will give us that type of, you know, ability to make our own decisions. So I called down to DOT several weeks ago. I finally did reach somebody who called me back. It was very helpful in understanding and getting to the bottom of the issue of should or must the municipality fund the speed study? Well, it turns out that there never was a requirement that the local municipality fund a speed study. All of the language suggests that it would be a good idea if we were to provide it, if we wanted to have it responded to in a timely manner. And I had asked DOT to put that in writing. You have that correspondence and in fact, in that very large document that she links to, it references the language there. So I have reached out in the meantime to our engineers to get a quote for what it would cost if we were to pay for those studies. We are, we do have our speed trailer, our one speed trailer in College Park now, collecting data. That data may be useful. But the engineer at DOT was very helpful. She guided me on speed limits and their thinking. And in particular, to the residential subdivisions, any road that's a quarter mile or less, they don't understand the importance or the relevance of the speed limit on those roads. It apparently, they've come to sort of a thinking that a road that's small, people really can't attain a high speed limit. It doesn't necessarily mean that people aren't driving inappropriate speeds on those small roads. We know in fact they are and that probably folks should be driving it much less than what is permissible. And again, a single road, a linear road, twenty-five miles per hour is the lowest speed limit you can attain in area. If we were to say all for College Park or Forest Park or Linden Acres, the lowest they would grant is thirty. So you take a look at the roads, for example, in Cornell, and I did a measurement through the tool we have. There really are only two roads that are longer than that. One is Thayer and one is Cornell. So we might consider, you know, the speed limits. And if I'm not mistaken, Teresa, are those the only two roads that have speed limit signs on them? Or do you know off the top of your head? And I apologize for?
No, I can't say off the top of my head. I can find out for you with a little bit of notice, but not at this point.
Okay, it was just a question that came to me, but so we discussed the possibility of, in order to gain decision-making capabilities, whether or not we would qualify for being a suburban township. There's specific criteria you'll see in that long document that she passed on. Essentially, you need to have a certain amount of people in your, your township, seventy-five hundred, but you also need to be within proximity of a community of a hundred thousand or more, which of course we are not. And so that would not qualify for us. But if you look in the DOT materials that they sent, there are a few examples of municipal home rule authorizations that have been granted. Not many, only a couple that don't meet that criteria. And so what I've done is reach out to our state reps. I've been speaking to and corresponding with my colleagues in Duchess County, all of whom are very interested in joining our effort to try and gain, again, home rule authority on the local roads. And so I'll be continuing to work on crafting a letter that would go to our state reps, the governor, and there are several state reps that are representing Duchess County. And to see if we can gain, gain this home rule authority. It would benefit the state and it certainly would benefit local municipalities. And I should tell you that we talked about in previous meetings that we've had some success. Many of my colleagues have had absolutely no success in reducing speed limits on their roads, so it's an issue that they care about very much. And obviously, our constituents and residents care about it as well. So would be looking for later in August, a letter with many of my colleagues joining to our state reps, asking them to carry a bill, a home rule legislation in order to grant us the same authority that was granted to some of these towns that are mentioned in the, in a recent authorization. Bedford, Lewisboro, North Castle, Pound Ridge, those are in Westchester. And also Riverhead and Suffolk were granted this type of authority. So that's sort of the update that I have for you. We'll have some decisions to make about the studies themselves. Meanwhile, it's going to take several weeks to collect the data, in particular in College Park. Once we get the engineers to give us an estimate and to sort of suss out exactly what type of instruments we'll need. Because there's some question about whether or not on the shorter roads, DOT would prefer to have the tubes. You know, you've seen where they do the tube testing and that's a time testing to get from one set of tubes to another set of tubes, as opposed to the data that comes from our speed trailer, the readout. I think probably both sets of data would be very important. Teresa?
They have a double tube setup where you see it around the county. And that, that double tube setup will collect how many vehicles by axle number and also does record the speed as well. That's what they have used on Echo Valley Road. Rather than the speed trailer, you can just leave the tubes in place for a week and get an accurate idea.
Right. And Teresa knows this, but the folks at home may not. Occasionally, you'll see tubes on some of our roads. They sort of rotate over the years. That's the county trying to get traffic counts mostly. But also, yes, identifying typical speeds, the eighty-fifth percentile on, on the roadways. I don't believe they've done, they sent us the list of their recent traffic counts. I don't believe College Park roads are in there. But I will check in to see what the latest and greatest with that is. So that's sort of the update I have on both the school zone question and also sort of a strategy for not just the town of Red Hook, but municipalities throughout the Hudson Valley and frankly, New York to gain some home rule control over these residential subdivision roads and other local roads. And, and to that end, in correspondence, we also have yet another request. And this from the folks down in Barrytown, Station Hill Road, who would also like their speed limits lowered. And they have a bunch of neighbors who have signed on to that request. Teresa?
I just have two questions. One is, when will I know if you want the school zone signs as far as you need to make the budget adjustment?
Yeah.
And the other question is if there is an engineering study, since budgets are so tight, what portion of the town budget would those studies come from?
That would come out of the B Fund. And the answer to your first question is in front of the board now. And I would suggest that we go ahead and make the budget adjustment to appropriate the funds for swapping out that, those, the signs there by the school.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill O'Neil. Any further discussion? Teresa, do you have a question?
Will that include the Station Hill Road pedestrian sign as well?
Yes, your request for the budget adjustments, yeah, for signage. Okay, all in favor? Christine Kane?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Bill O'Neil?
Hi.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Teresa. It was very helpful. Can we jump back to board reports assessor? And I can read that. The assessor's office has been busy finalizing the final roll for July 1st. All changes based upon grievance day or any changes that may have occurred because of grievance day, along with any petitions that have been settled from 2019. The New York State Tax and Finance Department has updated their website for assesses to run reports and update our records regarding the basic and enhanced eligibility. As you know, over the last couple of the years, the state has transferred the responsibility for those forms and determining whether or not a homeowner is eligible and has taken over that responsibility. County has now opened our file to begin working on the 2021 tax roll. There were twelve sales in April, ten in May, eighteen in June. And the assessor, thanks everyone for their continued support in the office. We have a building and zoning report. Bill Hamel, would you like to give us just a quick summation of the totals there or anything that you'd like to highlight?
No, it's a long report, but I will get to the main issues. There were thirty-two permits that were issued in the month. There was a hundred and forty-one inspections conducted. They issued eleven certificates of occupancy or completion. There were no complaints and the revenue that they generated through their activities was eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Sure about the no complaints, but okay.
That's what it says.
All right. We next up, we had highway. Police report, Bill O'Neil, you don't have it, so I'll give it, I'll give it to you, for you. Okay, we had, this looks like a shorter list. This is for June. We had several instances of property damage. We had, actually, Bill Hamel, it looks like we had six animal complaints. That's, I didn't hear anything about some of those, maybe.
They're not, they're not in the report that we received from the DSPCA. In fact, in June, they said there was only one dog barking at day result.
Okay, it might be, it might be worth looking into those six to find out what domestic disputes, lockouts, medical emergencies. security checks. We have the police going through our rec park in the evenings. And that's also part of the report. And different neighborhood checks driving through. And some noise complaints. And speaking of noise, we have had a few folks call about fireworks. We know that many people love fireworks. It does seem to be that we are hearing fireworks almost on a daily basis now headed towards the end of July. But know that some of your neighbors might be sensitive to those noises and that we do have a noise ordinance.
I'm also concerned, one of our neighbors, through the window that I can see from where I'm sitting yesterday or the day before, put on a rather impressive display, nearly professional. And I am concerned, this is an extraordinarily dry July and summer, and from a fire perspective, you know, there's noise and it's annoying for some people, but I'm much more concerned about someone starting a fire, you know, forest fire.
Well, we know there are folks at home either with PTSD or, um, children who are autistic and very sensitive to noise. Animals, obviously, many, many folks have pets that are terrified of fireworks. And so I guess we would ask you to maybe consider to try to condense the time period of which, um, you're doing fireworks, do as close to July fourth as possible, if we could, uh, knowing that there are some people who it does have some impact on.
But I, I do want to reiterate the issue on, on.
Fire.
Fire. Cause here's the thing that the public needs to understand.
Yeah.
If the public, someone in the public even inadvertently starts a forest fire, the state can actually bring an action against that person to recover all the costs for extinguishing that fire as well as the liability that may be incurred, uh, if they, if it burns down a neighbor's house or whatever. And I think people need to consider the risk, especially right now when it's so dry.
It's been extraordinarily dry. Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Bill. Jacob, uh, Economic Development Committee, could you give us just a brief report on that?
Yeah. So, um, the committee continues to meet, um, every week on Wednesdays. Topics of conversation are similar to what they've been in the past, um, you know, updates on local businesses, um, the Zero Project in the Village, um, Red Hook responds. Um, we're moving forward with a virtual version of hardscrabble this year. So that's been, you know, been part of the conversation. But a lot of it has been pretty similar, trying to encourage people to, you know, continue to support the local businesses and restaurants, um, where possible. Continue to wear masks and do so safely with social distancing. But I think that's, you know, pretty straightforward, um, in terms of what people should be continuing to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, there's also a rec commission report. Christine, would you like to tackle that one?
Sure. Um, this is, it, all of our rec committee reports are very detailed. Um, so I'm gonna summarize, but I just would like to start again by saying that, um, it's, we have a really amazing team in the rec department and the amount of work that they get done is incredible. And they are very good at, um, trying to reuse materials wherever possible, um, to save money to, uh, so they can custom fit things to needs. For instance, they, um, reused some metal piping that was pulled out as part of our project, many projects, and they were able to, um, reconfigure that and put new tops on it and make a, um, sort of fence out of it that we needed in another area. They were also able to use, um, old picnic benches and redo those to add a small shed, um, to our storage area, storage building for some of the, um, new, um, clay infill material that came with our, our, um, new redone ballparks. So they really are, um, looking at all of the options. And it's also important to remind folks that beyond, um, our rec committee, I mean, our rec facilities, our rec department also takes care of the Saint Margaret's Home property and, uh, the Red Church Cemetery north of the town, uh, near Tivoli. And uh, rec director John Kuhn and the head of the rec committee Doug Struinsky, um, recently hosted a, uh, a walk through the park for folks on the committee and, and members of the town board to attend, um, socially distancing with masks, um, so that we could see the, um, scope of the work that has been completed at both Rec Park East and Rec Park West. Um, neither one, not the parks are still not open. There is still work that remains to be done. Uh, but a tremendous amount has been accomplished already. The new fields look fantastic. The, uh, multipurpose field was really amazing to see in person, I have to say. Um, and, uh, dugouts are the next aspect of the two fields, one, um, one in Red Park West and one Rec Park East. And the foundations have been poured where they have to set for a while. And they're in the process of getting quotes for, um, constructing the dugouts and looking at different materials and facing, et cetera. Um, again, the fields and the clay and the infills are not open for play um, or for walking on, they, they have to settle. Um, however, again, the rec park team, rec committee team is doing a great job at maintaining the, um, infills on the properties. So they're not, so they don't have weeds in them. Um, so we will not have, you know, more work that'll have to happen, um, before they can be used again. Um, and they have been doing, they had to delay a lot of their mowing because of construction work. And so they have been getting all up to speed on that again, been doing a lot of cleanup along, um, the tree orders, uh, particularly at Rec Park East. Um, also up at the Red Church, uh, property has had a tremendous cleanup there and repairs to the fencing. Um, and they're hoping to be able to use some of the, um, soil and dirt that has been, um, I don't know if leftover is the right word, cause some of it still has to get used, but any extra dirt might be able to be used at the, um, Red Church Cemetery to help fill in sunken graves, um, and for mowing. And so they really got a lot of plans there. Um, in the meantime, besides just the, um, fields that have been having, the, um, upgrades to the tennis court have been completed. Um, also the basketball court is almost done. Um, changes have been made to lighting all around. Some trees have been taken down. Um, they're working with the, the pool on a few things. Um, you might remember previously we talked about, um, a Girl Scout who put a library, um, library box in the park as part of an award, the silver award or the gold award project, and that had to be taken down um, during the construction, but it will go back up once, um, a new location is determined for that. Um, and while the park closed, signs also had to be taken down when some of the paving was done. And so, you know, I just want to reiterate that people, people are not seeing park closed signs, so they think the parks are open. That's not correct. Um, they are still closed. There is still work being done. Um, so please, please keep that in mind.
Thanks, Christine. I happened to, uh, go through the park the other day and the basketball court is now complete. It looks beautiful. And I saw an image of, everybody's been asking about, when is the turtle coming back to the playground? I saw an image of Jay and Embo has, um, and, and volunteers, student volunteers, I think as well, um, have repainted the turtles, looking beautiful. So, um, soon to come, they're, uh, working on placing those, uh, benches back in the playground area. And then so we're, we're down to essentially fencing and restrooms. Obviously we can't do much, until the restrooms are available for park users. And so that's been sort of the, the delay. COVID delayed much of the work that we needed to do. But, but everything from the increased parking on the north parking lot. Um, it's just, it's looking super. We hope everybody's gonna be happy with it. A few more weeks, folks, and, and, uh, you know, hopefully we'll be able to open it up and we'll have sanitizing stations, um, you know, throughout the park, um, for people's use. Right. Uh, Town of Red Hook Senior Services Committee Report, I'll briefly mention. Um, their, uh, continue, uh, discussion of the transportation. They're going to do a surveys. Um, the annual, uh, Give a Child a Summer Meal food drive is being held virtually for the first time. Um, the committee, uh, discussed, uh, providing information, application form for the heap summer cooling benefit, which I mentioned earlier tonight. And, um, forums, uh, you know, seniors can call them at nine o'clock, um, to see if they can get the, um, Duchess County Transit Ride Share Program to get to a doctor's appointment. Um, seniors, uh, outreach initiative, uh, continues to provide information about available services and a fellow, fellow senior phone buddy. And for the folks at home, if you didn't know, one of the first things that we organized when COVID, um, you know, hit New York is our senior services committee members and volunteers called all of our seniors throughout the town to see what, um, they might need in order to assist them and to see if they would like checking phone calls um, on a regular basis. And they continue to do that work now four months later. So we're very grateful for that. And, um, the next, uh, senior services meeting will be held remotely later this week. Uh, Jacob, would you like to report on Tree Preservation Committee? And I believe that's the last thing we have for tonight's business.
Yes. Um, so the Tree Preservation Committee, um, did not meet in May or June. Um, communications continue to be email. Um, but as was mentioned earlier, it's been pretty dry. So, um, the new trees on Pitcher Lane have needed to be, um, watered, which has been happening. So, um, thanks to Hot Michael for doing that. Um, he's also mowed and trimmed around the trees on Pitcher Lane and, um, in Upper Red Hook. So, um, and he also pruned two large maples on Pitcher Lane. So thanks to him for taking care of that. But that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jacob. Um, that's all I have for this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the meeting. Thank you all.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
And myself. Good night, everyone. Stay healthy, stay safe.
Bye.